Yeah, but that's okay. (laughing) I have it, I still have it. There you go.
At this time, I would like to reconvene the regular board meeting. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Solis.
President.
Segura.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
Hall.
President.
Tarantino.
Here.
Janney.
Here.
Pangolinan.
Here.
We'll now hold a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance led by our student board member Brenna Pangolinan. Good evening, everyone. The board met in closed session preceding this meeting to discuss the following issues. Number one, student expulsions, suspended expulsions, recent statements. Education Code Section 48916 through 48918, students identified by ID number. Number two, public employee discipline dismissal, release, reclassification, reassignment, resignation, transfer. Government Code Section 54957. Number three, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Paragraph 1 of Subdivision D of Government Code Section 54956.9. Number four, conference with real property negotiators, Government Code Section 54956.8. Number five, conference with labor negotiator, Government Code Section 54957.6. Board took the following action. Moved by Tarantino, seconded by Solis, to accept the administrative hearing panel's recommendation to approve the suspended expulsion of one student with a vote of Hall yes, Pike yes, Segura yes, Solis yes, Tarantino yes. Moved by Pike, seconded by Tarantino, to approve the request for leave of absence for one certificated employee with a vote of Hall yes, Pike yes, Segura yes, Solis yes, Tarantino yes. Moved by Pike, seconded by Tarantino, to approve the request for leave of absence for one certificated employee with a vote of Hall yes, Pike yes, Segura yes, Solis yes, Tarantino yes. Moved by Tarantino, seconded by Pike, to approve the resignation settlement and general release agreement with one certificated employee with a vote of Hall yes, Pike yes, Segura yes, Solis yes, Tarantino yes. The board took no reportable action, except it was noted that because the district received an offer from a priority purchaser, the bid process set for October 8th, 2018 will be put on hold for now. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the September 24th, 2018 regular board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Segura, a second by Solis. Would you call for the vote, please?
Solis.
Yes.
Segura.
Yes.
Pike.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Tarantino.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
We will now have an update from our superintendent. Wait. Oops. We'll now have a board presentation of the 2018 Metro Conference Life Members. The board would like to welcome Mr. Joe Hines, who will present the recognition of the 2018 Metro Conference Life Members.
Good evening, President Hall, Dr. Janney, members of the board. It's an exciting night for us here. It's one of our biggest nights, something that we do as a conference, and that is honor our retired teachers, coaches, administrators, that have had a significant impact of some sort over the Metro Conference Athletics over their time in service for our district and for our conference. So typically, in the years past, we've had this ceremony at one of our Board of Directors meetings, but Dr. Janney last year thought it would be a great idea to do that here in this venue, and we did, and I thought it was awesome, and they definitely wanted to do it here again and get a chance to recognize these awesome folks. Just a brief bit of history here. Once I got into this position, believe it or not, this is going on year five for me, if you can believe that or not, yeah, definitely. We found very interesting that there was quite a few folks who somehow had been overlooked and missed and bypassed, or somehow just, you know, we've had all these coaching legends that are historical figures in our district and just have had a huge service to the student athletes of this district. And, you know, I've found over the last couple of years, we've gone back and gone and recognized these folks, because somehow that was missed or an oversight, and we have a few folks that were doing that for today. They've been retired for quite a while, but somehow we missed them and overlooked them. So we definitely wanted to make sure we honored them as well as part of this ceremony. So I'm very excited to get started here. We have just a fabulous slate of folks we're honoring today. If it's okay, Dr. Janney, if I call their name, is it okay to have them come stand across the front up here? I know, I think Ms. Janney, did you make some certificates? Do we have those? Very good, Dr. Janney. Okay. The first member, and I'm just going to call them here alphabetically in alphabetical order, and I'll have them come up. Our first recipient is Ms. Nancy Asario. Come on up, Coach Asario. Coach Asario was a longtime teacher, coach, still the athletic director and a coaching legend in the sport of softball at Hilltop High School. Very well deserved, Coach Asario. And just so everyone knows, they are getting a certificate, but everyone is also getting a lifetime Metro pass that's good for entrance in any Metro Conference event for their lifetimes. It's a pretty prestigious thing. There's only a few of those out there, so it's very well deserved for these folks.
And Mr. Hines, is that for them and a guest? Just wondering.
Dr. Janney, absolutely 100% correct. That is for them and one guest.
But make sure you know somebody.
Yeah, make sure you know. You know, definitely, we definitely need that support out of our athletics. So yes, it is the recipient and one guest. Thank you. Our next honoree is Ms. Nancy J. Lee. Ms. Lee Lee was a longtime counselor, assistant principal at Chula Vista High School. Our next honoree, and just so everyone knows, our Metro Conference is not just our 12 Sweetwater District schools, but also includes Modern Day Catholic High School. They've been a longtime member of our conference, and we have a great honoree, a former teacher, coach, and a longtime principal at Modern Day Catholic High School, and that's Mr. George Milkie. The next honoree is not here, but I definitely wanted to introduce him anyways and, you know, be able to announce him, and that is Mr. Bill Olinger. Bill just retired as a longtime teacher, coach, and assistant principal at Mar Vista High School, and that's Bill Olinger. We'll make sure we get Bill his card. Our next honoree is Mr. Charlie Sorge.
Thank you, Charlie.
Coach Sorge was a longtime teacher, coach at Mar Vista, Benita Vista, and Eastlake High Schools. Thank you, Coach Sorge. Our next honoree is Ms. Ann Stevens. Ms. Stevens was also a longtime counselor and assistant principal at Eastlake High School. Our next honoree is definitely one of those that we, not necessarily overlooked her, but she was, we had her written down as a recipient, and there was some question of whether or not she was, so we wanted to make sure we honored her today, and she's ill and are not able to be here, but that's Ms. Mary Ann Stroh, longtime counselor, assistant principal, principal, director, and assistant superintendent of the Sweetwater Union High School District. We'll make sure we get that to Ms. Stroh. Our next honoree is Mr. Steve Summers. The next honoree is Mr. Ernesto Zamudio. I don't know if Mr. Zamudio was here. I know he said he was coming, but I didn't see him. Mr. Zamudio was a longtime teacher, principal at Hilltop High School and Olympian High School. That's Mr. Ernesto Zamudio. The last three honorees we have was definitely tough on all of us. These are some folks we're going to honor posthumously, and these three people were, obviously, had a huge significant impact on the Sweetwater District over their years. Obviously, I don't want to... ...the district, and we're missing them much. Oh, awesome. Longtime district. School, and they just had a great ceremony. Went to the field after. Anybody in this district? Program. And again, another staff member that's going to be greatly missed. The last person we're honoring today, Greg Molina. And for me, that's... One of the best people in the whole world, and very difficult on me, but just another teacher, just like, you know, Ms. Charles and Mr. Bros that had a huge impact on kids' lives, Greg was no different. Passed away, but...
No difference.
Passed away, but he is... I'd just like to thank all the people. Members, coaches, administrators, everyone, thank you.
You don't have to exit if you want to, those people who just got recognized. If you want to exit this, you've been years of service.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. And we're not done yet. This evening, we have another recognition that we want to present this evening. All right. So we just wanted to say that the board is very honored to recognize one of our community partners, Baker Electric Home Energy, for their work with stall panels, connections, at the site, Mr. Eddie...
That will be a sustainable program, a zero net program, and that... donations from our partners. And so what we built was that portable tank system, 3,000 watt, and that one is going to help us to electrify the refrigerator that we use to keep the... Our future project is to have Aqua Phonics and...
They do a lot of volunteer work, and Baker employs a lot of the apprentices that we're trying to get out, and this is just a product of that program, and I really appreciate the... Our Poli School and our school. Having a PV, I didn't know he had a battery, I have to go out there with Poli, a battery there as well, so that's awesome. That's the latest and greatest technology, and allowing the students to, you know, participate in that is huge, and that's good. So thank you.
Really, really, thank you very much. And Dr. Harris, excellent work you're doing with the students. It's so exciting. They're excited. Even, they can't spend enough time on those projects. It's really exciting, and how much it's blossomed, I want to thank you. Everybody participating in the program, thank you very much. Everybody participating in the program, thank you very much. Now, we'll have an update. Janney.
Thank you. Well, welcome, everyone. Other districts across county, teachers and how much teachers positively impact the lives of... Was 28... Liam... Gin... Formed dance with the song. It was... All of our teachers in Sweetwater that evening. Claus Okaro from Chula Vista. Maria Gallagher, mother of Liam Gallagher, who sang the song. She's from Chula Vista High. Seshia, Hilltop High. San Diego County, in the California Teacher of the Year. Really proud, very proud of all of them. Seshia joins... Was in combination with Cock. Salute to teachers. We've been doing this a long time as a county. It's a great opportunity to recognize teachers, and we know that every year, we're going to have more high-quality... In 2017, Stuart Douglas from Granger was one of the Teacher of the Year finalists, and in 2016, Armand de Leon from Mar Vista Academy was also one of the finalists. We've got great students. Students have qualified as National Merit Scholar semi-finalists. There are two from Eastlake High School. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing this name, his name, well, but it's Justin Adjesu. February, we'll be more than likely going to receive these scholarships, but when we get there, we'll know for sure, and they get to use that towards their college tuition. So we're really excited. They're amazing accomplishment, and we're anxious to hear what happens in February. And then it's also great to hear about how our Sweetwater alum are making positive impacts in our community and... So just reading an email from one of our counselors, that the... Starting his second year at Stanford, just had his first poetry book published. It's called Work in Progress, and he writes that this book aims to remind readers that we are all works in progress, trying to make our own way through life. So if you can get a chance, go to Barnes &amp; Noble and look for it on Amazon. It's called Work in Progress by Darnell Carson. We want to congratulate him. And then there's the 1977 Montgomery alum, Caesar Solis. Not Solis, but Solis. He's the highest-ranking Filipino-American in the San Diego Police Department as Assistant Chief of Police. He had a park named after him in Ota Mesa this past week. He retired after 32 years with San Diego PD and was truly... He grew up where he said he would run around in the fields in those days, in partnerships with each other. We increase the efforts and talents available for creating something even that much more meaningful and powerful, because we're doing it together. So I talked about the power of being in the circle, and each person is a same distance apart, you might have remembered, from the next person, and no one is seated higher than or stands apart from others in that circle. And when a group of people come together in a circle, we are united. And because a circle has no beginning or end, and no end, the agreement to connect in a circle allows energy to circulate from one person to the next. Tonight, I actually want to talk about this energy in the circle. Even in a circle that creates this great environment for powerful outcomes, the type of energy generated in the circle can determine whether the group moves forward with positive energy or remains static with negative energy. And while in the circle, we all have choices of how we interact with each other. We can choose empowering words, we can choose compassionate gestures, we can choose genuine expressions, or we can choose to disengage or not be a part of the solution. We can be open and optimistic, so we can grow, or we can be closed and cynical. But we believe that when we consciously work toward choosing optimism, we initiate a powerful exchange of energy that benefits both the giver and the recipient. And because our empowering words and constructive actions are infused with this positive energy and intention, we extend and we actually transfer that powerful positivity or positive energy to others. And at the same time, this energy makes its way back to us, attracting more positivity into our lives also. So when we engage in this type of behavior, we are creating a very powerful cycle. People who take part in the cycle or in a circle with this positive energy find that their power, our power, increases exponentially while with the group. If we think about our district and the various relationships we have now and how we interact, we are constantly in either actual circles or in symbolic circles. And our greatest asset that we can bring to group interaction is our emphasis and effort towards building those positive relationships. And when we put forth positive energy towards each other, we will accomplish, and we have accomplished, amazing things together. So in summary or in final, I would like to say that let's continue to build those positive relationships in a deliberate way, using the empowering words, compassionate gestures, and genuine expressions. Thank you very much.
Dr. Janney, and now we will have a report from our student board member, Brenna Pangolinan.
Thank you. Yes, like Dr. Janney said, today was the first day of fall break, so students are definitely getting the break that they needed after this first quarter. This last president's council meeting, I was able to get a spotlight report from Jennifer Tapia from Mar Vista High School. So that will be the high school that I'll be spotlighting today. So Mar Vista is built on the basis of a very friendly environment, and most students that, like many other schools that I have highlighted, the school has a lot of safe spaces and places to go for students that might not feel completely connected to a certain group. There's a lot of safe spaces, and that's something that, it was nice to hear that, especially over many different spotlights, that seems to be an underlying glow. So it's nice to hear that not just happening at one school, it's happening at multiple schools. Another glow about Mar Vista is that they do have plenty of shade and places to eat during break, so students do feel like when, in their 30-minute lunchtimes or nutrition breaks, they have places to go. Some places that Mar Vista students said they needed to grow on... to grow on, unfortunately, Mar Vista kind of struggles with school spirit and that's definitely a work in process, but there is kind of a disconnect with the school. They have had issues with AC in some buildings, water faucets sometimes don't work properly, and bathrooms are not always stocked. So those were some things that students brought up when asked what they think Mar Vista could grow on. Another issue that the ASB president brought up was issues with the cafeteria's food. And what seemed a little different about this, this issue was not necessarily the taste of the food, but actually the preparation and expiration of the food. So it's been brought up to their school administration, but some food has been noticeably seen as expired and it hasn't really seen a significant change. But overall, Mar Vista is definitely a happy place. They're on the beach and its unique location definitely creates a unique high school experience for all of the students that go. I did want to bring up an issue. It has been talked about in President's Council meetings, but also just with students around campuses. So I wanted to address the issue that has been talked about statewide and I'm sure in this district as well regarding later school start times. So I'm sure as everybody is aware, last week, Governor Jerry Brown just vetoed a bill that would have required all schools in California to start no sooner than 8:30. And I'm completely aware that there are extensive logistics behind this issue that would be required to implement this change. And I'm sure that there's even further that I don't know that would need to be addressed if this change was implemented. But I do think that it's important to take a step back and look at this issue from a student perspective and put aside monetary consequences or scheduling changes or just personal inconveniences and really look at what's going on in schools and what the students need. So just from an observer perspective, I will say that we do kind of have schools of zombies before, before second period. And I know that many students aren't quite engaged in their first period classes. I know myself, it's not really the first thing I want to do, exploring the depths of the meaning of life in an AP Literature class, working on at most six hours of sleep. And I mean, looking at it from a physiological point of view, the research is there and the science backs it up. I mean, in last year in my AP Biology class, we could spend a whole lesson talking about how lack of sleep affects the brain development of adolescents. It affects your cognitive abilities and the development of coping mechanisms and simply just your academic performance. So with that said, I just hope that, you know, the issue kind of stays on the table for discussion and just even though not required by law, is still considered as a viable option for students' well-being and their academic success. So, thank you.
Brenna, it was, it's really good to hear about the what students feel about the late start time. Edit to a The point on, oh. Normally, we approve the agenda with a little flexibility and have the CBOC report at this time, but as of late, we've been moving that report to later in the agenda when the M items around construction are heard. So there's no objection.
Madam President?
Yes.
There are no M items currently pulled from the consent agenda?
So I was contacted by the CBOC Chair earlier and he had a message and he said he wasn't speaking on this item. So, or do we have anybody else speaking? Right. And we'll skip to the next, we'll go forward and the point on the agenda where members of the public may address the board on any matter not on the agenda and have three minutes each to do so. The Board of Trustees cannot legally take action on or respond to matters not posted on the public agenda, but will refer the matter to the Superintendent's Office for review and report. Thank you for your cooperation.
Vanessa Page.
Oh, boy, Ms. My name is Vanessa Page. I'm here on the behalf of my daughter Columbia Page, who graduated from Olympian High School. And she is currently attending Jackson State in Mississippi with a major in criminal justice at a focus in forensic science. I first want to say that I'm very proud of Olympian High School. I am a strong supporter of all the teachers, administration, custodian, the whole staff. My concern is, again, the athletic department. During the time, during the last three years that my daughter has ran track at Olympian, it has been a very stressful time for me and emotionally tearful for her. This year, I chose to step back and not bring anything to the attention of the school. That was my decision. As prior years, I did. And I just felt like to keep the stress off of her, I would not say nothing. I would remain silent. During the time that I remained silent, my daughter brought a lot of advertisement to Olympian. She at Gym Servy Track Meet, she was voted Athletic of the Meet. I was told by the coaches in different schools that the coaches actually voted for those students. And she was voted hands up by all coaches. She was captured in a 100-meter dash with a 1234, 200-meter dash has a 2541, and she helped to fall by 1/10 clock of 4875. Not only that, at Mesa League, she made it to the finals. She walked away with four Division One gold medals in the 4x1, 4x4, 100, and 200. She holds several records at Olympian. She also has several banners hanging there as well. She made the newspaper here in Chulavista many times. She received accolades not only from coaches from other schools. When they had assemblies at Olympian, she was always cheered on by her peers as MVP. When it came time for acknowledgement from her coach, she was not properly acknowledged. Her stats spoke for itself. She had the best and the highest stats on the female team. When it came to the most valuable players who did the most work to bring those banners to Olympian, it was not given to her, which brought very much sadness as that was one of her
All right, you can
That was one of her goals. Not only that, if you know track, track is scored on points. And if you have an athlete that scores high, the coach will also pull them to do other events. He pulled her to do shot put. My daughter is very small. He pulled her to do shot put against my will. My daughter came to me and she said she wanted to take one for the team. Of course, I know the terminology, take one for the team is coming from a coach. I said, I'm against it. And I explained to her why I was against it because I didn't want her to throw her shirt out. I said, but if this is really what you want to do, I would step back and I would yell. And I did. Her goal on the shot put was to break the record. She was very close. Then after she started doing that and she was doing well, he then wanted her to do the 800. Now, this was her senior year and this is the peak of her time. She just started just flying across that track. And she said, Mom, Coach want me to do 800? I can't do it. I said, Columbia, why you can't do it? I've never ran it. I don't know how. A lot of people think running track is just running around a track. There is techniques to run a track and
Yeah. Can you, can you come wrap up your
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I do apologize.
No, that's all right.
What I'm trying to get to is I'm a parent that loves kids. I speak not only for my child. You have a coach at Olympian who bullies the kids. Because my daughter didn't run the 800, he would not allow her to run two track meets after that. I had to go to administration to get them to allow her to run. My thing of it is, I don't want to see other kids. My daughter's gone. Someone have to stand up. Everybody's afraid to come down to the board because I heard that several parents have already been here and nothing was done. Now, I'm leaving. I will not be back again after this time. I'm asking you all, I'm begging you all, and I'm pleading with you all to please hear me out. If this is coming to you all every year, there is something wrong and it keeps being put on the end. I'm going to leave with you what my daughter says. And if you ever pull up her Twitter, you will see this posted. I love when they say what I can't do. I love when they give me something to prove. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and take my time, which I had a whole lot more to say. And I think there's a whole lot more that you all need to know about this track coach that you all are not actually hearing. But it's going to come to a fold eventually. And a lot of kids that were running last year, that is scheduled to come back this year, will not be coming. Eventually, Olympian won't have a track team, even though that's an academic school and I would recommend that school to anyone for academics. But those kids, the track team is about the kids, not the coaches. And I would love to see you all, please look into it. Don't just turn away from it. Everybody's afraid to come here now. Thank you very much and I appreciate your time for what time I was given. Thank you.
Yeah. Would you please leave your information with our board clerk and the
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
There are no further speakers.
Thank you. Right. Would you please read the items being pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, item F3 has been pulled by Mr. Tarantino. Item F6 by Mr. Tarantino. Item G4 by staff. Item K2 by staff. Item K3 by the public. Item N3 by Mr. Tarantino. And item N4 by Mr. Tarantino.
Is that M3 or N3?
N. N3 and N4.
Will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Hope to approve. I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Solis and a second by Mr. Pike. Would you call for the vote, please?
Solis?
Yes.
Segoda?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
So we will, we will visit F3 at the end of the Board has their comments. So we will move on to F6. Tarantino?
Yes, Madam President. I had a question regarding Jupiter Grades versus Canvas. And in terms of, you know, there's, there's a lot of talk that Jupiter Grades is going to be ending and that everyone's going to be going to Canvas. And yet, we're renewing a contract for Jupiter Grades. So I would just like some clarification about, first of all, what's the status of Jupiter Grades? And is it really going to leave? Or has that decision been revisited?
Dr. Jenny?
Thank you, Ms. Hall. So we're going to tag team this with Dr. Winters and Mr. Delacosa. Can you both join at the podium, please? I would like to start. No, you go first. No, you go first.
Evening, President Hall, Dr. Jenny and Board. So as you can see by the contract, Jupiter is being renewed. The reality is that the vast majority of teachers are using Jupiter Grades. I don't know if Mr. Delacosa has the actual numbers compared with Canvas use, which is not that large in comparison. They do different things. Canvas has a lot more things than Jupiter Grades. But in terms of grading, it's very well received by staff, by parents, by students. So for that, I think that's why we've continued to use it, even though they do similar things.
And before Mr. Delacosa comes up, let me just kind of clarify a little more. That two years ago, last year, at the beginning of last year, we asked every school to collaborate with their staff to determine which of the three systems would they be using for grades? Jupiter Grades, Canvas, or Infinite Campus? And so last year and this year, every school has made a decision about which, which grading program to use. And so at this point, all schools use the same program. Now, if you're using Jupiter Grades, you could use Canvas as well as a learning management system. But all schools have a choice about which of the grading programs they can choose. And we're still, this is an evolution and they can talk between Mr. Delacosa and Dr. Winters, they can talk about that process going forward. But that's where we are at this point in time. Do you want to add anything, David?
Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Hall, Dr. Jenny, Mr. Tarantino. Couple of years ago, as part of the architecture presentation to this board, basically, we discussed that we were using three grade books. And generally, when you try to establish efficiencies in operation, usually use one. So as Dr. Winters had indicated, the majority of our teachers do use Jupiter Grades. It's about 63, 64%. The other two, the next in line is about seven schools with Infinite Campus and then the remainder, about three to four Canvas. So in collaboration, we're trying to support these, these schools and these grade books. When it's, we have to get to a point where we are going to need to select one grade book. And in order to do that, if, let's hypothetically say it is Canvas or let's say it's Jupiter Grades, for that matter, we have to truly integrate that with our SIS system. And until we do that, we're going to continue to have issues, synchronization issues, delay of data or synchronization of data, security, which was evident last couple of months. And so those things, we cannot streamline unless we take the first step and make a decision. And so we had to renew that for one more year because I don't believe we were ready to make that decision. And so it's just another year with this grade book. Dr. Winters and I will work feverishly to try to get to the point where we can establish a strategic direction for the district in collaboration with the teachers. So.
That it? Follow up?
Yeah, I was under the impression that we were leaving Jupiter Grades because it was no longer going to be supported. The technology was no longer going to be supported. I, I didn't, I didn't
Our school.
I didn't understand that it was an integrated system with Infinite Campus that was
Jupiter Grades is a cloud-based system. So basically, it's a separate system on its own. So basically, when teachers actually utilize Jupiter Grades, they have to re-input that data into Infinite Campus. That's our source for actually presenting information to the state. So we're continuing to do that. If we are going to seriously consider Jupiter Grades, then we have to evaluate a real-time connection between the two. We haven't done that because we haven't made a strategic direction as to which grade book we will select. And if we select Canvas on that hand, or really any grade book, then we would take a look at how to integrate it more effectively.
Thank you for the clarification.
Welcome.
I thought, I'm glad you pulled the item because I actually had the same question. And I thought we were moving away from all these subsidiary programs into Infinite Campus. I know that there were challenges. There's always challenge with change, get people to redo what they've already been used to. There were challenges, I believe, in Infinite Campus user-friendly platform for the parent. It wasn't as as user-friendly for the parents as our Jupiter Grades or whatever else was out there. But I, I thought we were moving away from all these different things. Last year, last year, I was surprised that we're still not going to one. I thought we made that choice when we contracted with
President Hall, we, we gave the schools in collaboration with the teachers their selection. And so
With no time limit on that? With no time limit on that?
It's been, it's been, it's been a year-to-year basis. And so we, we are revisiting that. We are comparing the, the current issues with Jupiter Grades as well as Canvas and with Infinite Campus. The, as you alluded to, the knowledge base is pretty well set with Jupiter Grades. We're very used to that. Communication with students, communication with parents. Very difficult to put a tangible number and value on that. And so strategically, from an architect perspective, it should be one grade book. But it's not that simple. And so consequently, we are working with the teachers to try to collaborate and get them to concur on, on a specific direction.
So what, how does this play into the transcripts? And how that creates issues? Does that create issues with our transcripts? When you have a separate grading program?
It's two different areas of the system, so no.
What, you're saying they don't really talk to each other without a lot of work for it to be systematic? It's something your staff, you have to address? How you have a decision?
We have to address it because we synchronize to one, a one-way system. So basically, each day, we upload Jupiter Grades with updated information. Teachers, students use that.
You upload it where?
I'm sorry, we upload data to the Jupiter Grade System from Infinite Campus. So there's a one-way data synchronization from Infinite Campus to Jupiter Grades. Teachers manipulate Jupiter Grades, and then consequently, they have to reinput information into Infinite Campus. So only a one-way sync.
I would think we have a report about that. We need to have a cost, costing out of what's going, the different proposals, so we can make a decision forward. Either we get, move away from Infinite Campus, find a system that provides what we, platform similar, or grades as a platform. Seems like we're keep plugging along with separate stuff. And I thought the goal for having an architect, architecture on system, everything coordinated, it wasn't like a annual-type process, which sounds like it is because nobody's really working in
Yes, and, and this year, again, that's why we had to extend it. We are working with teaching and learning to, to establish which direction we should go.
We, we will get some more information to you, but it is complicated. So because they each do different things and some do things that others do not. And so that's why it's complicated. We've been working with the teachers on this. And so one is a learning management system that also has grades. And then we have our student information system that has grades. And then we have a grade program that's used by the majority of teachers because it's, it's effective for them. So it, it is a process, and it's a conversation we're continuing to have, but we will continue to update the board on that.
Yes? Angelina? Angelinon?
Yes, Angelinon.
Angelinon.
Just from a student perspective, I would say that Jupiter Grades is really the only way that students are aware of their progress in each class. It's very easy to use. I know parents use it also. And it just organizes every assignment very easy to see. It's very accessible. And Infinite Campus is used for, I know, tests and some other assessments, but the day-to-day assignments are really only logged and accessible to students through Jupiter Grades. And that is also easy, like you have it as a, a window on your computers and you can always be updated on your status in each class.
Right, so are, are there any other questions on item F6? That'll entertain a motion to approve item F6.
I'll make that motion for approval.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Segura, a second by Pike. Would you call for the vote, please?
Solis?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item G4, staff.
As Ms. Alvarez and Dr. Winters are getting set up, this is our monthly LCAP goal update. And this, this happens to be LCAP Goal Number One, Teaching and Learning.
Good evening, Ms. Hall, Dr. Janney, trustees. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We're probably going to be adjusting the microphone since we have a disparate height. I'm vertically challenged compared to Dr. Winters. This evening, we'll be talking about LCAP Goal One, which is to ensure, ensure excellence in teaching and learning so each student is prepared for success in college and career. And we'll be approaching it from two directions. One is, we'll talk to you about the statistics that we have and the data that we have so far. We do have some data that is currently embargoed and we cannot share, and we'll share in a future meeting when that's available to us. But we'll talk about the statistics, where we are in the data that we've captured, our growth, and in some areas, decline because of situations that Dr. Winters will discuss in his presentation. And then we'll also talk about some of those things that are more qualitative in terms of the actions and services that we're providing throughout the district in teaching and learning to support our students to achieve Goal One.
Good evening. Dan Winters, Director of Research and Evaluation at EdTech. And so our first piece of data to talk about is reclassification rate. And you see quite a significant drop last year, but that was really due to the fact that last year was the first year of the LPAC test, which took the place of the CELT. So the LPAC test was given for the first time last year. It was given in the spring, and no results were available, in fact, until about July or August of this year. Therefore, there was no way to reclassify a big group of students with that new data during last year. We did reclassify some students by using older data, old, year-old CELT data, and then relooking at their other data points, which were GPA and EOC scores. So we did reclassify some, but that drop really was due to the fact that we couldn't consider a lot of students without the LPAC data. We will be reclassifying those students this next quarter based on last year's LPAC. So CLO by literacy is an area where we've done a great job over the past few years. We really increased that number. Continues to be quite high, even with the change in the qualifications. A new criteria was added this year, so it's a little bit not apples and apples, but apples and oranges in the last two years because the SPA requirement to meet or exceed was new for the class of 17, 18. Maybe due, some of the drop might be due to that change in the criteria from the state. We see a pretty steady A-through-G completion rate, and that would be for the UC system, A-through-G course requirements, hovering there around 51%. The grad rate for 17, 18 is still preliminary, tentative. That's not official yet, but it looks to be a slight increase of a percent grad rate for the class of 2018. So one critical aspect for kids getting ready for college is turning in their FAFSA or their Free Application for Federal Student Aid. We saw a huge uptick there. Really, congratulations and kudos to our counseling teams throughout the district who do the lion's share of the work. I know I saw lots of different meetings across the district to, like, workshops and time to help kids fill this out. Truly critical for them because we see, one of the things that happens to a lot of kids that actually qualify for college, there's a thing called summer melt, where they qualify and even get accepted to schools, but they don't go. And sometimes that's just due to things like information and financial aid. So getting that done is really gonna support our students not only graduate, but get into and persist in college. One of the areas we've had great growth in the past decade has been advanced placement. We continue to have more and more students taking these tests and passing them. Once again, last year, we see that number jumped again for those numbers that took and passed. And this year, the percentage of passing even saw a nice jump as well. Again, given the fact that more kids are taking the test, the pass rate now goes up. We really would have to say that the NIMZI work is contributing to that higher pass rate because we had a lot of those NIMZI events on Saturdays to support kids to, to do better on these AP tests. So even though they're asleep and zombies during first period, they're still seem to be getting enough done to pass some of those tests. This gives you just a breakdown of the number of tests per student. So you see about almost 4,000 students took one AP test. You can see the number of kids who took multiples. I don't know who that poor kid is who took 10. But sometimes they can take tests by just challenging tests, even though they aren't taking the course. So I don't know if that student is still alive, but very ambitious. It probably is indeed Xavier, yes. So talk to you about the LPAC. So here's the 16, 17 results from this CELT, the Former Language Acquisition Test. And so we just wanted to kind of give you an idea of how our students did on LPAC. This data just came out in July. Again, you'll notice if you look at the year before to the year, CELT had five levels. Those are the ones we've been used to for many years, beginning, et cetera, up to advanced. The LPAC now has four levels. And so the qualifications for how they will reclassify has not been determined by the state. I mentioned we will reclassify some students second quarter based on our own criteria. The state has given us the freedom to make that choice. We've been collaborating with school districts across the county to make sure we're picking a cut number that's about similar to other schools. But nevertheless, we did see about, as you can see, the percentage of kids at the different levels in LPAC. Summer school, so there were a few students that went to summer school. To explain this data, there was 11,000-plus students enrolled in summer school. You don't get an F in summer school, so if you don't pass the class, you're just as if you never attended. So that's why the number of credits is actually lower than the number of kids who initially enrolled. I think that number, there was about 7,000-plus kids who got at least one credit. Some got two. But nevertheless, we saw about almost 11,000 credits earned this past summer. I'm gonna turn it over now to soon-to-be Dr. Alvarez.
So we talked about some of the, the quantitative data. And in one of the commentaries, Dr. Winters talked about, you know, what effects our professional development has or what our grants have on student performance. The first part I'm gonna talk about is what actually the professional development has impact on our staff. And I wanted to list here what you see that are bolded or things that we've had over the last three years. We've been looking at developing instructional capacity and leadership across the district. And so a lot of these elements that we have are about really improving how we look at teaching and learning and leadership. And making sure that across the district, we have standards and expectations for all teachers and staff and counselors and administrators so that we're working together and we're continually learning. That's why it says professional learning and development. Sometimes, as adults, we need to continue our learning process. And this is one of the things that the LCAP has really provided us, the opportunity to maintain and increase our opportunities to learn. So we have school leadership teams, which include all the site curriculum specialists, the faculty advisory committees, and we focus on instructional practices and engaging really our professional learning communities to ensure that at sites, we're working together to improve instruction. We have learning and equity walks, which I'll mention in a moment in a little bit further detail. This year, we're going to start something that's called Sweetwater Principal Network, which involves cohorts of schools working together to have a very visible and transparent process for doing learning walks within a smaller cohort of, of sites. Our teachers on special assignment, which are assigned through curriculum instruction, and at-school sites through our site curriculum specialists are really working on the instructional piece in terms of what is taught, how it's taught, and how it's assessed and supported. We have site curriculum teams, which are new this year in terms of we are training site curriculum teams to really look at our instructional strategies and pedagogy across the district to improve access for our students. And then I included induction, not necessarily that it's been funded and supported by the LCAP, but it certainly works hand-in-hand with the supports that we provide to our newest teachers. And it's a support that's been critical over the last three years. This is now the third year. We've had over 300 teachers the first year and about 275 that are supported this year by induction, by having mentors that support them. And so we want to make sure that everything we're doing within all of our areas and duties as assistant superintendents are aligned with the LCAP. Our work is also interdepartmental and interconnected. We're making sure that there's alignment and coherence across that. And the last thing is the professional development that's provided not only to our certificated staff, but to our classified staff members on an ongoing basis. As you recall, we pay for three additional days out of our LCAP so that classroom time and teacher time with students is uninterrupted. And so we could use that professional development to support ongoing practices in the classroom. So I talked a little bit about the learning walks, and this is something that we haven't really brought forward to the board, but we want to make sure that everyone understands what we're doing as a community of professional development and professional growth for ourselves as leaders. And so we really do think that in order for a practice to become embedded, it has to be highly visible. It has to be present. It has to be understood. We have to have a framework of instruction that leads to what we're doing in the classroom every day. We want to make sure that our best practices are calibrated, that we have common language, and that we have really gathered the data about what is happening in classrooms and how we can best support teaching and learning across the district. We want to make sure that these learning and equity walks, which will also be supported by the principal networks, continue to improve our instruction and practice. So I have mentioned before that we have our school leadership teams. And over the last four years, we've been working on how do we create the systemic coherent system across the district. And this is what we've come up with in terms of our expectations of what should happen in classrooms in every single day, in every single classroom. And it's about what is happening with teachers in terms of their beliefs, in terms of their supports, and the systems that we together collaborate with and create to support students. It also talks about the classroom and culture, the social environment, the social emotional learning environment that our students have. Ms. Pangalian talked about, you know, most school sites feeling, students feeling safe, feeling welcomed. Well, we want that in every single classroom across the district. We also talk about what are the learner outcomes, what are student learner outcomes? In terms of what are the expectations for every student to reach that pinnacle of being ready for college and career? We've also focused on high-leverage engagement strategies and instructional practices that really support students to maximize their learning opportunities. We talk about assessment for learning, which is how are students, as we monitor their progress on a day-by-day, on a minute-by-minute, on a monthly basis, on a summative or formative manner, how we're doing that? And then as a teacher, how am I reflecting on what's happening in my classroom and making adjustments as needed? So this whole cycle is something that all of us as leaders, all of us as teachers, all of us as counselors are involved in as part of our Sweetwater Effective First Instruction. Our TOSSAs this year, our Teachers on Special Assignment and Curriculum Instruction, are really in terms of this, working with the teachers, and in particular, the site curriculum specialist, on student learner outcomes, on the high-leverage instructional strategies, and also on assessment for learning. And the way we're doing this is focusing on learning teams, which is really getting together, working together, and making sure that we're able to establish our student learning goals, putting a plan of action, making sure that what we want students to learn, that we have a strong plan for that implementation, and that we use feedback to adjust our lessons and our unit plans to ensure that students are accessing the instruction as needed. In addition, we've also talked about kind of what we call an instructional framework in our theoretical framework, which is really the focus on what is written, taught, and tested in our curriculum. We want to make sure that we have a common understanding of what mastery is, that we're constantly gauging where students are, and that's the assessment, and that that first-time instruction is relevant, productive, and students actually understand where we are. And if we don't, then we provide the necessary interventions and supports to assist in getting them there. This is all focused on the type of PD, high-powerful PD and professional learning and development that our sites get. Collaborative planning, which occurs at the PLC level, the professional learning community level, and making sure that we give supportive and timely observation and feedback. And that occurs with our walks, that we do our learning walks. And that occurs with our walks, that we do our learning walks. We also wanted to let you know what's been going on in terms of curriculum instruction and the departments that support LCAP Goal One. Last year, we were able to adopt new curriculum for our English language development courses and our criminal law textbooks. We also developed instructional guides for all content areas. We are in the works of this year of revising those and making sure that they're refined and aligned and coherent. We completed the English learner master plan in collaboration with state and federal and also with research and evaluation team. We provided ongoing professional learning and development district-wide training on the next-generation science standards. And then, as I mentioned previously, we have the three days of professional development that in collaboration with all units, we provide that to not only our certificated but classified staff. And then we also provided this last year and continuing this year, we have the math tutors that are at every school site. So for college and career, Dr. Winters mentioned before that we had the National Math Science Initiative grant that was about $8.1 million. And what that provided was not only professional development supports to sites, also had nine tutorial sessions for students throughout the year, provided professional developments for the teacher, and initiated also some vertical alignment in our curriculum and our structures with laying the foundation, which was training for non-AP teachers or for teachers who were really feeding into AP classes. We wanted to make sure that those opportunities were there. We increased our CTE pathways across the district, and one of the things that CTE is extremely proud of is that one of the pathways that was increased was the sports medicine pathway, which exists in all our school, in all of the high schools in the So teacher learning is continued within CTE. We've been hosting teacher externships, which is really on-hands, practical, relevant professional development where they go to different sites with world, the world of work kind of based experiences. We increased the number of students accepted at UCSD. We had the first-time Dreamers Conference for high school, for middle school students, and we had our first underwater robotics team, a competition for middle school. Going to have Dr. Winters talk a little bit about research and evaluation and educational technology.
So in ed tech, we've had three goals over the last couple of years that we've been building on, and those you can see there, the focus on a learning management system. And as you could heard in that discussion related to Jupiter, we're still a long ways from getting to where we need to be. And hearing from Ms. Pangellian and the usage at high schools in particular, we have a long way to go. So we understand it's a long-term project to change the way teachers teach. And my belief is that we need to do it slowly because I'd much rather see great teachers use technology thoughtfully than just force them to use technology without thinking. So it will take time to get that transformation, but we definitely have many things in place to increase the use of learning management systems that we have in place. We have been focusing on digital citizenship, which is required, but every school does have a plan to do digital citizenship practices. In fact, coming up soon is Digital Citizenship Week in October, so you'll see a lot more events across our district related to that. And it doesn't mention it there, but the other third focus that we have besides those two is really technology integration for pedagogy, where I think the majority of our work needs to be. As I said, we need to really work with our best teachers and help them use technology in a way that's thoughtful, that enhances the lesson. As we know, technology can often be used to be as a distraction, so just adding technology to a lesson doesn't make it better. So we've worked hard with curriculum instruction to look for ways to embed technology in a way that supports learning. In RNE, our vision is this, we believe that data by itself does nothing. But data in the hands of leaders at the right time and at the right, at the right place can help them make better decisions. And so we've really been focused on helping site leaders in particular, counselors, assistant principals, assist coordinators, get the data in a way that they can use it and it's timely. The data you've seen tonight has been summative data, end-of-the-year data. It really, that data doesn't help us get better. The data we need is the data day-to-day, attendance, grades, suspensions, referrals, that data that happens all the time so people can see patterns and trends. They can also look at that data by student groups to make better decisions on a timely basis. So to that end, we've restructured our RNE team. We've added new positions to what we call our Data Insights Team to provide that timely data. So in fact, we just added two new people to that team this year. And I would say that we're most proud of that is that that's costed $0 to the district. We repurposed positions that were already there and used money that was already in our budget to really support this team that has been providing data to sites to help make better decisions. At the end of the presentation, we're going to show you a short clip of what that looks like and talk a little bit more detail about that. Finally, we worked closely with curriculum instruction last year to provide training on formative assessment. Ms. Alvarez mentioned that assessment for learning is one of our six elements of effective instruction. And so we provided a lot of kind of front-loading of that work around formative assessment, which is helping teachers make decisions in the moment to improve instruction. Again, not waiting till the end of the year, it's too late, end of the unit, it's too late, but throughout the, even a lesson, teachers learn how to read students, see if they're observing, understanding a lesson, and make adjustments on the fly. So it's that kind of training we provided to teachers, and a lot more follow-up and ongoing training is needed, but we did provide that with, in conjunction with curriculum and instruction. Next, we have state and federal.
So one of the areas that we're really proud of, you know, our long-term English learners, which are about 75% of our English learners, and usually students that are struggling academically and for other reasons. Prior in the district, we didn't have a program that specifically addressed their needs. And over the last few years, we've worked in conjunction with Avid and created Avid Excel at all of our sites. We started with one school site, Mar Vista Academy, which was a model school for us. It was a test pilot, and it grew to about seven schools, and now we have 13. All 13 of our middle schools offer with over 34 sections. And we're hoping that the work that is done in meeting the educational gaps that students have in English language development and also in some of the affective domains of language acquisition, we believe that we'll continue to see our scores rise and we'll have students reclassified. So that's one of our excitement. As I mentioned before, we've developed the English learner master plan, which really provides a cohesive roadmap to everything that we do with our English learners across the district. With visual arts and with CTE, we worked on really increasing access for students. So we heard very loud and clear when we first came on board through our LCAP meetings, number one was really access to CTE and visual arts. Our parents asked for it, our students asked for it, and our community asked for it. So that's something that we've invested part of our LCAP in funding those supports for our students. The arts programs are also going through a modification. We have national art standards, and we also have the California art standards, which we are addressing and creating instructional guides that align with both sets of standards. That's been a process that started two years ago and will continue to move forward. The California art standards will be our goal. So what are the next steps for us? We really look at each year refining what we do, refining our professional learning and development for our staff to improve student achievement. We want to make sure that we're focusing on the essential elements of first instruction across the board. We want to make sure that our leadership, and when I mean leadership, that does not mean just administrators, I mean leadership across the board, our teacher leaders, our partners in building capacity across the school district. Want to make sure that we're refining our monitoring systems. Dr. Winters said that, you know, many of, most of the data that we have is summative. We want to make sure that we have formative data on the spot, that we can make adjustments as needed with students in a critical time and a critical manner. And then, as I mentioned before, the Smarter Biologist Assessment data right now is currently embargoed. Once that data is available, we will come back and present that information to you. Then Dr. Winters was going to provide a brief demonstration of data insights, but before we go there, are there any questions that I may address?
Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do have some questions. Thank you, thank you very much for the information. It's very concise, it's easy to understand, it's excellent. I guess the overarching question that I have is how much of Goal One is transferred to alternative ed and learning center? In terms of, well, in terms of almost everything, in terms of teacher support, in terms of site curriculum specialists working on ways to deliver different kinds of subjects that are taught in the learning centers, the kind of professional development strategy, teaching strategies that would help teachers who are in the learning center, what I would consider generalist as opposed to specific content area. How are, how are these things that we're doing in the comprehensive school transferred over to the learning center, if at all they are? Because unfortunately, I'm under the impression that it's not transferring. That's because of who I've talked to and my meetings with people, things like that. The other thing is, is periodically, we have members of the community who come and criticize us about how we're handling our English language learner programs. And yet, the data that you present, and you always present on an ongoing basis with the creation of the master plan and how we're working with teachers and support for the students and the reclassification. What kinds of efforts are being made to communicate with these members of the community who also have formed a group? From what we were told the last time they appeared at our, at our board meeting, that they were going to be coming and watching us, so to speak. What kind of outreach are we doing to them so like that some of the misconceptions that they're living with are corrected and that they have a true picture of what we are doing in Sweetwater for our English language? I don't, you don't need to answer those now because I kind of sprung those on you, but if I can address them now, then Friday update would be great. Thank you.
I can address what I can address, and if there's gaps, I'll certainly address those at another time. So your first question about the learning centers and, first of all, the data, the data that we have here encompasses all of our students. So as you know, our learning center data is not disaggregated from the school population. So any information that is here is school-wide, including learning centers. So that's the first point. Second point, in terms of professional development, so we have the two and a half, it's three-day pullouts available. Our learning center teachers are all part of that, available to be part of that so that they can get trained during those professional development days. So that is available for them. That's in one way how we've trained the majority of our teachers over the last three years is with those pullout days because we're trying to minimize the impact of instructional time. We also utilize our curriculum specialist here at the district, our teachers on special assignment. And in particular, when we help support to develop curriculums such as the Integrated Math I, II, and Financial Algebra, and the Biology I, II, and Earth Science I, II, our curriculum specialist trained the teachers at the learning center. Do you, do, your question is, do I think that we could probably be doing more? We could. We just don't have the resources and capacity right now, but I think there's a way to change some of the structure to support that. Because you are correct, sometimes our learning center teachers are generalist. They're teaching all subject areas. In fact, they may be teaching up to 50 subject areas at one time. So to improve and support them is certainly something that we should focus on. So that would be one of the ways that we could look at improving that.
Is there, is there, Madam President, through the chair, is there any way that teachers who are trained and is there any, for lack of a better word, cross-pollination between the teachers that, you know, this is what I, this is how I do it, and this may be helpful to you? Is there any opportunity in PLCs or other kinds of collaborative endeavors that they can share these things?
Definitely, so.
Because it would take the burden off of, off of district to do that, and I'm sure that, you know, they, they've lived through it, and so they, they would, they would be excellent.
That's actually the motto that we're using this year. So the motto in curriculum instruction is that we're teaching to fish, but we've already got fishermen and fisherwomen out there. We just want to improve their ability to catch fish. So what we, what we're doing with the site curriculum team is building that capacity. So we'll do general sessions. We just had one, for example, that had a session on pedagogy and on specific instructional strategies to improve engagement. And then we had pedagogy, I'm sorry, information on assessment for learning and when you were assessing, who was assessing. So that curriculum team from each site goes back and teaches it to their site. But what we're really hoping that part of that best practice is that the learning centers are encompassed in that versus thought of something separate and isolated. And so trying to really, once again, that coherence across the district where we are part of one Eastlake, one Olympian, and we're supporting each other. So that's the manner that we are focusing our energy this year. And then you also asked about English learners, and we are working diligently to ensure that communication, our plan is to meet with them once a quarter with the community members who are very interested in what we're doing. Our English language learner master plan, I think, is one of those elements that fully highlights all the work that we've done. It not only includes the assessment, the redesignation, the process for reclassification, placement of students, it talks about best strategies and pedagogy. I think through that element itself, we can reach out to them and show them what we're doing. In addition to the adoption of our new curriculum, which is very hands-on and has multiple assessments and supports for students and teachers, I think having them potentially walk through some of our classrooms with us so that they see the work in action.
Thank you. You're doing all the right things. Thank you.
Mr. Segura.
Yes, that was a really good presentation. That was, really well done. I have a question on page 20 with college and career and career technical education. And your last bullet says increase career technical education pathways and courses across the district, and just wondering what we have done, what we've increased, or what are some new pathways? And then how do we determine what is a, you know, a viable pathway?
So we've increased several. The most noted is, is the, we used to have sports medicine at four sites, it's now at all sites. We've also increased with the supportive, the Board of Trustees, we increased the Construction and Technology Pathway at Santa Sido and have a full contingent of courses there that we're starting. So most of the reason that pathways are created are based on surveys with students. So what are the interests and careers that students want at particular sites? And that is conducted through the counseling center and through the admin teams. Funding is also one of the considerations. So we have had some cuts in our funding for CTE, and so that has impacted. We were hoping to grow some of our additional pathways. We've had to kind of hold where we are right now, but we are working on grants to further increase those courses that students are asking for.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad you pointed out the new pathway, construction pathway at, I don't want to be seen as a guy who's all about construction, but I guess I really am. But the new pathway there at Santa Sido and their new, their, their classroom that they have, and that's actually, expand on that M2 that we've already had a gended, so that's, it's really good. Do we talk to like industry, the industries as well and see what they want to partner, if they want to kick in some money?
We do. We're part of the South County Economic Development Corporation meeting, and so Dr. Janney sits on that and as does Elaine Leano, who is our Director for College and Career Readiness, and Leo Uyola, who is our STEAM Specialist. They attend, they speak, they connect with community members, community leaders, business leaders and associates. In fact, when we do our PD on Monday, October 8th, through that connection, all of our CTE teachers will be CTE teachers will be experiencing externships in businesses around South County because of that.
That's great news. And I didn't want to leave out the studio that they have at Santa Sido that was started as well.
Yes. They are working on developing a student-led studio.
Right.
They are working with that.
Dr. Reyes is doing a fine job there at the...
Yes, he is.
Thank you. I just want to say to Dr. Winter for the clarity on your comments around going mindfully, develop the capacity of teachers to utilize technology in a positive way, their instruction, not to, the need to do that mindfully and not do it. I also thank you, Dr., or almost Dr., one of these days, I'm not going to have to say, oh, I thank you for your presentation. I think the data was really clear and, you know, where we can pinpoint that there is, it may be slowly growing, but it is on the upward swing for the pacing, the outcomes for students. And I have a comment that I wrote on deformative assessments that allow teachers to adjust instruction in the moment and how important that is. And those assessments could even be just a teacher asking questions, right, of the students in their classroom, just checking for understanding. That's an assessment. My thinking, I appreciate all the information you shared. One last thing.
I think we have a short, one and a half minute video. That's a demonstration of the Data Insights platform. And as you show that, I just want to give a shout out to the team, really, who has built this. Enrique Campos and Jorge Gutierrez have been there since day one. We've just added Chris Alcaraz and Rio Campo. What you're seeing here is just one quick screenshot of what one of the data points looked like. This is data by department. So it shows you across the district. So if I'm a site leader, I can see across the district how other schools are doing in this particular department. Right now, it's showing all departments together. What's that?
This is...
These are grades.
This is campus or...
This is grades. This is a program called Data Insights. So it's a separate program that just does data. You can see at the bottom, it has filters for all key student groups. So whether or not you're looking for the English learners, students with disabilities, foster and homeless youth, you can break down the data by any student group that you want to focus on. You'll see in a middle shift to look for one particular course, like integrated math across the district. So if we wanted to know, for example, if I was a school and I was concerned about my integrated math grade distribution, well, how do I compare across district? I can quickly filter this chart by department and by course and see, is there a school that maybe is doing better with integrated math grade distribution so that I can learn from that school? So in essence, it has data of all types, this being one example. You see it's filtering now by integrated math. Again, this has data, this is data that we can act on right away. Grades is one example. And when grades come out, a lot of work is done to, number one, analyze grade distributions like I just mentioned. But also, let's find those students who are doing well and doing poorly. So students who are getting lots of As and Bs, we can celebrate and acknowledge them. Students with the Ds and Fs, this is the time when interventions begin, whether that intervention is a meeting with the counselor or doing Saturday School or some other intervention. The key point here is, all we're really doing with this program is saving time. So the counselors, the assist coordinators, the APs can do the important work they need to do, which is meet with kids, design interventions. The biggest benefit of this platform so far has been the hours and hours we've saved assist coordinators and APs from creating these things on their own. Often, they would have to go get data from different sources, do some Excel magic, and create the data report that is done for all of them immediately. This year in particular, some of the new data points we've added are these spreadsheets called comprehensive spreadsheets. It basically adds 75, 80 data points on one spreadsheet. Assist coordinators love it because they no longer have to go look for that data. They can quickly then sort that to get the answer to the questions that they have. So that's just a quick overview, one look of, there's about 30 different visualizations in the platform, depending on what data points they're looking at. So any questions related to that?
Can you drill down to the student in this platform?
Absolutely. So every one of these, we had it all sort of hidden because of its public showing.
Oh, yeah.
But absolutely, there are student lists. So if I did find that students integrated math with a D or an F who are long-term English learners, I then go to another screen, it quickly pulls up those kids, and I can, let's give that to counselors, assist coordinators, whoever's going to follow up with them. So it has that ability to pick the students.
So do you control this platform?
I control it all, yes. Right? So...
What's that guy's name? Scotty?
Be me at Scotty.
Yeah, Scotty in the engine room.
So actually, I'm the leader of the team, but the team really is the ones who, we have great collaborations with IT. Doris Easterly really helps us talk about the data. Data is very tricky to get right and be consistent, as you all know, right? So we work closely with that team, with teams across our district to make sure we're displaying data in the most accurate way possible. And so when you say I control the data, our team really gets that data from various sources into what's called the data warehouse. And then we visualize that the data is day-old data, so it's updated every night from Infinite Campus and other sources.
So what I mean by control, so if I'm a principal or a counselor at a school site, I can sign into this platform?
Yes.
And then I can pull out whatever I need?
Correct. So each one of those people has data access according to their role. So if I'm a principal, I have access to all my site data and some of the district comparisons. And if I'm a counselor, I have access to my school data, et cetera. So they have access to their school data and some district comparisons. You're welcome.
Garantino.
Where were you 15 years ago?
Chula Vista Elementary playing with kindergartners.
We won't get into that, though.
Right.
Thank you.
That was presentation staff, so there's no action to take on that item, but we really are thanking staff for that informative presentation. Now we will move for a break and back for item K2. So see you in 10 minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Ms. Hall. So, for those of you who follow the budget cycle, tonight's presentation of the unaudited actuals usually happens in the first meeting in September. And so, just in case you don't know what unaudited actuals are, they are where we close all of our financial books for not this current year, but for the previous year. So, this is for the 1718 school year. And because our board and our district leadership are committed to transparency, we are taking this opportunity to share this financial update with our community. Now, when our staff was finalizing this report in late August, we noticed some cause for concern of a potential shortfall in closing our financial books for the 1718 school year. We immediately communicated with the San Diego County Office of Education, since we work in partnership with them, and since they provide support and oversight. So, we conveyed we needed a little more time than the September 15th requirement to verify and confirm the final numbers. So, the county office supported the extension to provide that extra time to finalize our unaudited actuals. And we're going to share a few more of those details as we get further into this report. But what I really want you to know is, what's important now, to know now, is that we are approaching this challenge like we have approached other challenges over the past three and a half years with this new board and the new district leadership in an open and collaborative way. Since we first noticed the concern, we've been sharing this information with site and district leaders, as well as our labor partners, leaders. We've been diligent in addressing our challenges in the past, knowing that we believe collectively we bring solutions, creative solutions, when all voices are at the table. And this situation is no different. We are confident and already are determining solutions to address this current fiscal or financial deficit. So, at this time, what I'd like to do is introduce our new CFO, Dr. Jenny Solkeld, who comes to us with a depth and breadth of experience and knowledge of over 20 years in the area of school finance. And just to give you some background on her, she has a degree in accounting, she's got a master's in business administration, and a PhD in organizational psychology, which I just think is awesome. We've already appreciated and benefited from her perspective in resolving this current challenge that we have. But this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Jenny Solkeld. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you, Dr. Jenny, and thank you, President Hall and Board Trustees. What we'll be sharing today with this presentation this evening is, we've got the agenda here, we're going to go over the budget cycle, just provide some context, and then also go into what are the unaudited actuals, as Dr. Jenny mentioned, in terms of where we're at with our fiscal year end. We'll also take a look at our general fund ending balances, the combined view, unrestricted and restricted, and then look at other funding ending balances, and then discuss next steps. But I'd like to share here, because a lot of what our budget entails at the local level is very much driven at what happens at the state level. And so, the governor's proposal in January each year, working with the State Department of Finance, he works collectively in putting together what the next school year, or the next fiscal year's budget will look like, based on assumptions and based on economics that are occurring there at the state level. So, as an example, when we started our work for the 2018-19 budget, that provided us the assumptions underlying from a revenue standpoint, and some also expenditures. And it also began the work at the state level in terms of the committee work, that the state legislature works with the governor. But then on a local level, we started to work with our school sites, started to work with our school site councils, putting our budgets together. So, as those months progressed between January and May, there's another opportunity where the governor provides an update to the schools and other government agencies. It's known as the May revision. There too, again, the Department of Finance at the state level provides any further updates that may be kind of occurring from the economic standpoint, and includes that in that particular budget update. That really then starts to put things into immediate motion between the governor and the state legislature, because there is a requirement that the state legislature submit to the governor by June 15th, a budget for him to approve. So, again, at the local level, there's a lot of moving pieces on our end, too. We're bringing forth to you a local control accountability plan, we're bringing forth to you the first and the second reading of the budget that we know of, so back in June, we were bringing to you the 2018-19, based on the latest assumptions that we are aware of, knowing that things can still shift a little bit in June between the state legislature and the governor. Because the governor has until June 30th to sign off and approve that budget for 1819. Because we also have to be mindful, there is a requirement under education code that we need to provide a board-approved budget to the county office of ed for their review, because they also have statutory requirements. So, with that being said, we go through that process through the end of June, and then soon after that, in July, we start the unaudited actuals process. That is, as Dr. Jenny mentioned, us looking and closing the books for the prior fiscal year, looking at all revenues, looking at all expenditures as of June 30th, that we need to have recorded at that point in time. Another key milestone from, again, these are all state-driven, state requirements, is our first interim and our second interim. First interim provides an update of data from July through October. So, when we come to you in a few months, which will be in December, we'll start our work in November into December, we're providing you an update on the 1819 budget. That provides where we're at in terms of actual trends, actual activity in comparison to that budget, but we also have a requirement to provide a certification, or the board takes on that certification, of whether or not we can meet our obligations financially in the current year and the subsequent two years. So, that entails, the certification is either positive, that you can meet all three years. It's also, then there's qualified. Qualified means you can meet the current year's budget, but there's still some concern in the out-years, and the negative is that there might be financial challenges with all three years. Again, that's an opportunity that we bring to the board in December, and then we go through that process again and share that with the board under second interim, which is in May, or sorry, March 15th, which has an extended timeframe. Now, we provide data from July through January to give you an update on that budget. And then we start the cycle all over again. So, we wanted to provide this context, because that's important, because as you can see, unaudited actuals is kind of in that middle timeframe, in the midst of all these different moving pieces that we have going on throughout the year. Again, as Dr. Jenny mentioned, unaudited actuals, again, all our statutory requirements under the education code, provides all the revenue and all the expenditures that the district is entitled for as of June 30th. Typically through the summer, we do get guidance from the county office, as well as School Services of California, with any key considerations that we as school districts should be aware of in closing our books, looking at revenues, looking at restricted resources, things that they may highlight for us to take into consideration. And again, typically, it's submitted before September 15th. So, what I'd like to share here, and the subsequent slides will also show, these are snapshot views of what you have, what's known as the SACS report. It's a standard, standardized account codes structure report. It's all driven by the state, but we call it the SACS report. So, these are different snapshots of both our unrestricted and restricted funds under the general fund, and then also some of the other operating funds, which we'll go into a little bit detail here shortly. But what I wanted to highlight here is, general fund is comprised of two different key components to kind of distinguish the two. We have unrestricted, which is our day-to-day kind of operations, very flexible, and then we also have our restricted. Those particular funds typically have specific requirements or conditions on how those monies are used, such as Title I, Title II, those are the most, the common ones with, as it relates to federal. But even most recently, in the last couple of years, the governor's budget included restrictive grants, such as the educator effectiveness grant and the college readiness grant. That falls into that restricted category piece. What I'd like to do, just because it does combine that, and kind of, in terms of the ending balance, I'd like to carve out and focus on the unrestricted specifically. And focus on the unaudited actuals column. So, I'm going to kind of address each one of those elements of what we call the statement of financial activities. And so, we start off the year in 1718, our fiscal year, we had a $17.8 million balance of just unrestricted fund, not including restricted. Throughout the year, we have about, in terms of revenues, it's about $397 million. This is, right now, it's netted on that column there at 328 because of the contributions, but I'll touch upon that shortly. So, we've had $397 million come in that the school district's entitled to from the various funding sources. And I'd like to spend some time on local control funding formula, because that is a large dollar amount that the district receives of 362 million. That is comprised of various components. Local control funding formula includes state aid, it includes property taxes, and it also includes the education protection account. So, those key elements, there's a state calculator that takes all these different variables into consideration, and then it accounts for each one of those categories of funds. And we receive those categories of funds at various points in time throughout the year. But one thing to note, to closely monitor LCFF revenue, are the key variables that go into that calculation. That's enrollment, that is our average daily attendance, as well as our unduplicated percentage. And that's our students that are foster youth, free and reduced lunch eligible students, and also our English learners. All those are variables that come into play, and that it's critical for us to monitor during those reporting periods that I shared earlier, first interim, second interim, because there are key points in time throughout the year for us to make adjustments, or at least do some planning adjustments. As an example, local control funding formula is paid out to districts on a certain percentage formula from July through December, based on the prior year's data. Come October, which is known as C-BES, which is the California Basic Educational Data, that's a checkpoint that we get data that's submitted from IT in our student information system, and submitted to the state, it's the first Wednesday of October. That data is critical, and that starts to build in terms of our review of all those elements that go into that calculation, because then P1 is another measurement period in December, where we look at our attendance information and all of those variables to then make a review, or adjustment in terms of our revenues and our plans. And at that point, that's also when the state makes adjustments for funding for the remaining part of the year, from January to June. But it gives us opportunity, and for all of our stakeholders, as we build and provide those updates on the budget, what are our assumptions looking like, what does P1 look like in December? And then P2 is usually typically in the middle of March, and that really becomes our basis for our funding for the year, once the CDE certifies that in June. And so, that, there's a lot of pieces, but I wanted to highlight that as it pertains to our largest source of funding for unrestricted. With that being said, under that revenue category, other considerations, when we have these revenues come in, we have about $68 million in contributions that we support other programs, particularly special ed. It requires funding from the general fund to make sure, because we do not get enough money in terms of AB 602, which is the state funding, as well as the federal IDEA money. So, we do have that requirement to meet all the requirements under the IEPs and those student needs, so there is about $58 million of that 68 million that is attributed to special ed contribution. We also have the CTE, or College Technical Education Program. We do contribute about $1.6 million to that program as well, from unrestricted. And then we also have the balance of that is attributed to our routine repair and maintenance that we need to contribute per code as well. So, that accounts for that net amount of revenue of 328 million. Now, moving to expenditures, these are all of the obligations that we have as a district for our employees, for our vendors, anything that we, you know, books and supplies, contracted services, things like that. As you can see, we had a total of $350 million that was expended in 1718. One area that I'd want to highlight, and you'll see that in a subsequent slide, is our other outgo. We note on there about $7.6 million. And in that $7.6 million is a contribution of about $1.5 million to our adult ed program, and then also about, no, $500,000, excuse me, to our adult ed program, and about $1.5 million to our cafeteria fund, so about $2 million. So, that's another key consideration in terms of the funding there that is coming from general fund. A few things that perhaps in terms of, we're one-offs for 1718, kind of looking at where we're at, when you see just the operational difference between total revenue of 328 million and 350 million dollars worth of expenditures, there's a difference of $21 million shortfall there. We had scenarios, as an example, last year, utility costs were about a million dollars higher than what we had anticipated. We also implemented HVAC across our district, so that was something, too, that increased our costs, and it's something that we need to look into 1819 as we're moving forward in revisiting our budget. I know that our Assistant Superintendent of Facilities, Dr. Aguita, he just sent an email out recently, too, with our two-week break, if that's something we can conserve and monitor some costs. Anything we're trying to do proactively, we're looking at some measures there. Other things that, too, certainly areas of opportunity going forward is in terms of substitute costs. You'll see on a subsequent slide, we do have about $2.3 million of carryover from Title I. That could be working very closely with the sites, if those were costs that may have been able to be transferred to that restricted funding source. that may have been able to be transferred to that restricted funding source, rather than having in unrestricted, which is another key consideration that, with higher costs in 1718 that we certainly are looking at putting processes in place to monitor for 1819. And so with that, one other point that I'd want to, I didn't mention with the revenue, under transfers in, there's about $12 million. We did have, in order, as we were part of our year-end close process, we look at different options and see what, if there's opportunities for some expenditures or revenues. There was a settlement that was under Fund 40, that we did transfer that into general fund in order to help offset the bottom line as well. So right now, we're about $3.5 million. If you take that beginning fund balance of 17 million, the total revenues that came in and expenditures that went out, we have a $3.5 million shortfall. And so then, the next consideration is looking at reserves. We've got a couple of items there as it relates to requirements with some stores, which is inventories and also revolving cash. But one thing to note, that in accordance with ed code, is we need to have, based on our school size, and our 2% set aside for economic uncertainties. So as you see there, you know, it's typically around nine to 10 million. But given where we're at, we, this was something, as Dr. Jenny mentioned, when we had conversations with the county office, we're very open about where we were at. And that was one consideration that we noted, that at this point in time, that is not reflected here for purposes of unaudited actials, but certainly does need to be restored and addressed when we do and revise the 1819 budget. One thing that I also wanted to note, because that 3.5 million does carry forward from an operational standpoint into the adopted budget. For adopted budget, this particular information, which is also in your SACS report, that ties to your board action, collective board action in June, late June. So that is the adopted budget at that point in time. That's what's reflected on your SACS report. Your SACS report reflects the unaudited actials and that adopted budget. There was subsequent board action, 45 days, that was led into early August because of those changes with the governor's budget, with some of the one-time monies that were reduced. So the board took action at that point, but that information will be reflected in our revised adopted budget, not for this purpose here. I'll transition here to Dr. Jenny to highlight this communication piece.
So, for many people in this room that are still here, this information is not new, because we've been discussing it with not only our Board of Trustees, but with our labor partners and our site leaders and directors. So we've been very engaged with all of our stakeholders since the onset of this potential shortfall. Our commitment continues, like it has, to involve all voices, all opinions, all recommendations, all suggestions, as we move forward to rebuild the 1819 budget. In fact, we currently have created a link on our website, our district website, to share, not only share information, but also to seek staff and community input on this rebuilding of the budget. So that will go live this week, we're working on that right now. And so, like you typically do, you get a, an email from me saying what happened at the board meeting with my message. I'll send you a separate email with, with the link that will take you directly to that website information. Again, we are confident that with all stakeholder engagement, we will collaboratively determine the best solutions that meet our fiscal obligations for Sweetwater, while keeping our focus on putting students first. That is our commitment.
And then the next few slides, I just want to, again, these are all reflected in your SACS report, but this is the restricted view of the total, of the general fund. So there's this component here, primarily ties to the College Readiness Block Grant. That's how, that's accounted for when you look at the ending fund balance. And again, these are just snapshots of other restricted funding sources that we had throughout the year, such as Educator Effectiveness and Lottery. Those funds have been expended as of 2017, 18. And this here is another snapshot of restricted resources, primarily the federal. As you can see, Title I has a carryover balance that's going to go to 1819 of about 2.3. Ties back to what I was mentioning earlier about perhaps some opportunity indefinitely ensuring going forward into 1819, that staff, you know, substitute costs are being coded according, or coded appropriately to the respective funding source. And do also have additional funding with Title II, or at least carryover into next year. These next group of financial statements, again, are going to be snapshots, but I just wanted to highlight this particular page, that adult ed, as I mentioned earlier, did require $496,000 contribution from the general fund. And the same thing with cafeteria fund, it required about $1.5 million. So these are certainly areas too, as we rebuild the budget, that we look at any cost considerations or opportunities there, that we can minimize the impact to the general fund going forward. And again, these are the respective slides, or financials for each of those funds. The next item I just wanted to highlight as well, which is all included in your SACS report, are the capital project funds. The building funds specifically, that is separate from the general fund. Those are your monies from the Prop O bond measure. There was a bond issuance earlier this year, about 28 million. Those monies are managed separately with the county. The county is responsible for collecting those taxes and managing the debt service for that. So that is not at all part of the general fund. However, I did want to highlight with capital facility funds, particularly on this slide, Fund 35 and Fund 40, they are related to capital, but they provide a little bit more flexibility on the use of the funds, unlike the bond. And this is where too, as I mentioned earlier, we did have an opportunity to transfer some settlement funds from Fund 40 to general fund. And then likewise, the reverse, there were some costs that were incurred in general fund that were facilities-related, for about $3 million that we were able to move to Fund 40. CFDs are part of that as well. So these again are the respective financial statements for each of those funds. And then the last component here to highlight is, there are a few, it's almost kind of like a semi, kind of like an endowment. It's a foundation trust fund that we have to keep separate as well from the general fund. These were donations that were made several years ago with the intent that the interest would be used for student scholarships. And there's this little over $12,000 in that fund. So where we're at now, and what we've shared collectively, is we certainly recognize there's an issue. We've been working very closely with the county office of ed. But in terms of recognizing that we've been working very closely with our team within the finance or the fiscal services, as well as with our program, eventually, you know, we're looking at our data, looking at assumptions that were built in for the revenues, looking at assumptions that relate to positions and all the different cost considerations, whether it's contracts or supplies into the 1819 budget, because we are going to be reevaluating that. Because we will be needing to bring to you back on October 8th, a balanced budget that addresses that shortfall, also restores that 2% economic uncertainty and the other reserves that we need to have accounted for. Because that is in accordance with Education Code, that we need to bring forward that revised budget to you by October 8th. The team's working very closely with internal staff and with stakeholders. And then, if there's any other opportunity after the 8th, because at that point, we will submit it to the county office after your approval, there might be another opportunity at October 22nd to review any other further updates with you, because the county office has until November 8th to review that revised budget for their consideration. Again, all in alignment with statutory, with Education Code. And with that being said too, we also have our external auditors, they're going to be on-site the week of October 8th. So we've got a lot of things going on right now. And so our request is that you review and approve the unaudited actual so that we could submit that to the county office for their consideration and for next steps. Are there any questions?
Questions? Felice?
Thank you for that report. A little alarming, but it happens. And one thing that I was very pleased with was with when issues were found, the communication with the county was immediate. How has that communication with the county been as of when we found out?
So we have been engaged with them since the beginning of September, as soon as we found out, and it's been very collaborative. We've had their Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Mike Simonson, who's here today, as well as their Dr. Gothel, the superintendent for the county, meet with Dr. Jenny and I, and so we've been very engaged in terms of, we've provided preliminary reports to them. They've also had staff here to help us look at some considerations as well. So very proactive and very collaborative.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pike?
Yeah, Salcal, is that how you pronounce your name?
Doctor.
Doctor. Excellent report. I can understand it. I'm really pleased with what you and your team are doing. You're, you're really going in and doing an audit, per se, to make sure that all the little things that's been spent are truly something that we have. And that's awesome, because I think you're going to find some things. I'm hoping you find something. And so I just wanted to thank you and your team. And also I wanted to thank my mom, hoping that we break, all the electricity, paying attention and shutting off the refrigerators and the lights and stuff at night and all that stuff, will save us some money also. Because I've noticed a lot of electricity being used, or not, in school. Hopefully that'll turn out well, but thank you.
Any questions or comments? Dr. Salcal? I just wanted to say that I am very thankful that you're here. I have trust that you understand your experience is well-needed, and for our district, and that you will, that you're doing the analysis, digging into the, making sure that there are systems that are in place to have transparency and clarity and make good decisions. I appreciate the leadership that you will provide your team, doing that, and facing that task. So I'm looking forward to hearing our next meeting. Yes, Dr. Jenny?
Thank you. Just as one last comment, I just really want to assure our Sweetwater community that our ongoing commitment is to work thoroughly and diligently to keep focused on our L cap goals. You know, there's the teaching and learning, equity and culture, parent engagement, and coherent and transparent systems that support each student's success. And at the same time, over the next few weeks, over the next month, we will be collaborating collectively to implement a plan to address our budget challenges with the least disruption to our students and staff. That is our commitment. Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Salcal.
Thank you.
I just, just real fast, I just wanted to echo the board members in comments, and Dr. Jenny, and the leadership from far to the top with Dr. Jenny and, and the team, and been working nonstop on this since it was discovered. And it wouldn't have concerned me, but it wouldn't be where it's at now if it was not for you being here. And like Mr. Pike said, that, yeah, I am so glad you're here, and your communication is excellent. For somebody who's not an expert in this, I could definitely understand this and a lot more now. So thank you, thank you, Dr. Jenny, and your whole team.
So now we will have, I will entertain a motion to approve or accept this SACS interim. The unaudited actual report is presented in item K2.
Second.
Motion by Felice, a second by Segura, would you call for the vote, please?
Felice?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passed as 5-0.
Thank you. Now we will have item K3, which was pulled by the public.
I have one speaker, Kathleen Cheers.
I would like to raise questions that were raised previously and are still unanswered. Where, what are the protections for walk-on coaches when dealing with booster clubs? While I understand parents wanting to assist programs, I'm concerned about the equity for schools who do not have the financial support of a booster. How can a program with no booster monies compete against programs able to raise $22,000? What message does it send? $22,000 for one program? How does a robotics team with large booster financial backing compete against the non-booster-supported team? What if those non-booster-supported teams did not have the IBEW? Where would they be? What does it say to a cheer squad with no financial backing when they find themselves competing against a squad who historically receives new uniforms, including items such as bags, every single year, when schools like Montgomery and Chula Vista walk out there wearing uniforms that may be three years old? Where's the protection for the district? If a liability issue arises and students are hurt, for example, a party bus is involved in an accident, there's no parents and there's no Sweetwater district employee there. I looked over the attachments and I didn't see, unless I overlooked it, the need for them to have insurance. You all will be held liable. This district will be held liable. With the thousands upon thousands being donated, it has morphed into a have versus the have-nots. I'm sure that is not your intent. But those schools that do not have boosters, other than maybe a football booster, what about them? What about those students? What about the girl that goes out there, you know? Been a cheerleader since she was two or three years old. You have a whole team going out there. But what I think people are failing to realize is they're competing against each other. They have these little tournaments, and not just the squad, cheer squad, but all of them, robotics, everything. You've got schools that have no money. I mean, they have the little bit of money that the district gives them, but other than that, they have none. You're creating monsters. No disrespect meant to the booster parents, don't call me, I will hang up. But really, you are. All kids. I hear Dr. Foltzer at every single meeting talk about equity. Where is the equity here? Thank you very much.
Does the board have any que, excuse?
Yes, so my question around this is, and thank you, Ms. Cheers, for those comments, around this is, is this the last time somebody could, that they're, they have a booster? And I know it's very lopsided right now, you know, there's, there's, I'll just leave it at that, but just kind of curious. That's my question.
Let go to Dr. Salcal.
Well, how about if I start and then she can fill in the gaps? Because it started last year, we started working on updating the ASB manual around booster organizations, which are now called school-connected organizations. And so we're trying to get everybody on this cycle. And so this is the first round of booster organizations, or school-connected organizations, that have submitted their application or review, for approval from the CFO, to be recognized by the board. And then our, our intent is to then have, at least this year, quarterly meetings with all of the presidents of these clubs or organizations to make sure that they understand everything they're doing. And then do that every quarter until we get through a full-year cycle to get everybody on, on the right path. So that's our intent. It's, sometimes they create school-connected organizations by season. So this is the fall, and some will come to us in the winter, and some will come to us in the spring, and then again for the summer. So it's a, it's an ongoing cycle that we're just trying to get monitored. And it's, this is our first round of applications that have been submitted. Got anything?
Mr. Tarantino?
No secret how I feel about booster clubs.
No secret how I feel about booster clubs. I think part of the problem is that they are independent entities, and I know that that's the way that they're organized. My concern is the oversight of the activities in which they engage, because even though in the administrative regulations, it says that they are supposed to abide by district policy, I think the oversight of that has been lacking. And I know that now we're tightening up the oversight and the accountability, but I still have problems with activities that are off-campus and in parents' homes where there's no school personnel to chaperone. And even on their dinners that they go to, the coaches, many times, are not invited, depending on the relationship that the booster club has with the coach. If they have a good relationship, then the coaches are invited. If they don't have a good relationship, then the coaches are excluded. And there's no personnel from the school to chaperone. And my understanding is, is that they're using permission slips with school letterhead on them, which makes it seem like to a parent that it's school-sanctioned. And it's really booster club sanctioned and not school sanctioned. So, I'm hoping that the review committee puts in checks and balances and some teeth into, again, I know that we can't, can't tell them what they can do with the money because they're independent, but I agree with Mrs. Cheers. I think ultimately, I think it can come back and bite us in terms of liability if something should happen to one of the students while they're on one of these functions.
Thank you, Mr. Tarantino. I would, when you're talking about liability, isn't that a legal question? My opinion, I would, I would want to hear from the general counsel on our exposure with the liability question.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Anytime the word liability comes up, I hope you don't think of calling me, because, you know, obviously, we have, there's liability in everything. But I think what we have done is ensured that there actually is insurance that is required for the school-connected organizations. They have to submit insurance at a given level that is a requirement of the packet that Dr. Salkeld is reviewing before she brings it forward for a recommendation for recognition from this board. There is a lot of work that I think that we have to do. That isn't necessarily just a legal recommendation. That is something that our committee as a whole, that Dr. Carberry and myself in this room sat on. And this is the first step. Right now, we didn't even have necessarily assurances that every one of these packets were being completed, that they were consistent with our guidelines, ARs, administrative regulations that went into as much detail or provided to you, provided you as a board, the ability to look at that. And I think that that is there. The training will go into place this year to make sure that our booster clubs understand what the expectations are. And then at the end of the year, we do have the ability to do some reviews as to, did you do the activities that you said you were going to do? And what came of those? And then Dr. Jenny has the ability to bring forward to you a recommendation on not re-recognizing them, not renewing them. So, they're absolutely, we believe there's safeguards based on liability insurance, but frankly, we think that that's just the first step in making sure that there's some oversight. And so, what Dr. Salkeld is bringing forward and just bringing this group forward is, is the boosters that have actually at least filled out the forms correctly. And that's our first step.
So, there is a requirement in their application to prove that they have liability.
Yes.
And what is the state, what is our, what is it, the ed code determines is, how that connection? Is it, we are connected, not totally independent, because it is being like recognized by our district? There is a connection. There is some sort of responsibility besides just saying, yeah, you can operate.
So, there are, I mean, obviously, it's called a school-connected organization, and so therefore, there is a connection. However, I think one of the major steps we've taken this year is not have the board approve as though you're giving your blessing of the organization and its operation. You are recognizing their existence. We have changed in those guidelines, the fact that moving forward, even those that are IRS-recognized with a name that says Eastlake High or Eastlake High School, that they have to formally change their name to not include the word "high school," to not use our logos without permission, to not have the same links to media, so that we are starting to build that separation and that ability to have some oversight. So, again, these are all first steps, and they are things that we are working with the sites to make sure that there's some consistency in how that rolls out.
Thank you. Right.
I think the other piece that's critical here is that booster clubs' activities are supposed to be for adults. So, activities that involve students, those are school-related activities, and they need to fall under the rules and regulations of our school district.
So, what is our, what is our remedy for that when they're not following that? When they are conducting as, with students? I mean, if we don't have notice of it, how do we, how do we make sure that our students are sheltered from the things that would harm them? And what remedy do we have? Do we have a cease and desist process? Do we have a notification to those people that are conducting those activities in our eyes as a, so what do we have? Because they're not employees. Can't let them go, right? We can't, how do we?
Under the policy, you have, you, the board, have the right to have Dr. Jenny withdraw recognition of that organization.
Immediately?
Yes.
The other thing I think that is interesting, and probably, oh, I'm sorry. And we've actually written in there the fact that we have the opportunity to audit them at their expense. And so, I think that that is another thing. If we think that there's a fiduciary issue that is there, we also have the ability to get into their books. And that isn't something, it's been written tacitly in there, but it hasn't been quite as explicitly. So, I think you've got the safety issues of if an event goes down, if there's fundraising going on that's involving students, which violates the rules, obviously. If there's financial issues, if there's safety issues, upon our knowledge, Dr. Jenny could take action, bring a recommendation to you to not renew them or to withdraw their--
And I want to say that we do have our fraud hotline is up and operating now. And the link is right on the first webpage that you pull up as a district. There's a link, and it takes you right to that fraud hotline. And you can submit that information either online or by calling the phone number that's listed there. And it is active. It is ongoing. And anybody that has information about abuse of this agreement or part whatever it's connected activity, should be reporting it through that hotline for investigation.
Yes.
All right. So, now I will, I would also like to see if there's a way for us, because I noticed we didn't have backup that really listed what these different organizations are about. And normally, we have backup on the website or on our board docs. When those have complete contracts, we have complete, because we want to have that historical information in our docs. But in this case, I understand there's, I'd like to hear in a future, but what we might do to provide that documentation so that anybody is able to check it, check it out and see what they are all about. And there's information, there are like certain ID that need to be reacted if we, but I believe we need to, like, that's where information is out there for everybody, see, so that they can hold them accountable as well. They don't have the information, they won't be able to call a hotline. So, if we could do that, I, maybe you can report back Friday update or with the next time you bring the item or approvals, recognition, whatever it is, you can tell us on how that's going. So, if that's all we have in the questions and comments on this item, I'll entertain a motion to approve item, recognize A3. But we have to approve it, right?
Yes.
Approve the recommendation to recognize a booster organization.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Segura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Solis. Would you call for the vote, please?
Solis?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Right. And three, Mr. Tarantino?
I just have a comment, Madam President, and that is, I was glad to see that on our list of approved charter bus companies, that there are four that can provide ADA-compliance services. And that's a great thing. So, I just wanted to make that comment.
Nice. Are there any other questions or comments from, no? I'll entertain a, item N3.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, a second by Mr., motion by Pike, second by Solis. Would you call for the vote?
Solis?
Yes.
Segura?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item N4, Mr. Tarantino?
Yeah, Madam President, I just had a question. Once we approve this list, what determines what company gets the actual job? Is it on a rotating basis? Is there an RFP issued among the companies that do that work? And I know that we have some new companies, but it seems like what's been coming forward is same companies over and over again. So, I was wondering, is there any kind of equity in terms of who gets the job or what's the basis of selection?
Dr. Guti?
Yes, thank you, President Hall. In this particular item, there was an RFQ that was issued, so it's part of an RFQ process. It's part of a pre-qualification method, which is, occurs every five years. So, our previous pre-approvals had expired this year. So, we go through and approve. In this particular instance, the consultants were for soils investigation, geotech, and inspection services, hazardous material testing, stormwater pollution consulting and inspection services, and indoor air quality. So, it's for those particular types of services. Because we did do an RFQ, we are compliant with the requirements we're going out. In terms of the selection process, Planning and Construction has instituted a process wherein they request three quotes, if you will, from the consultants on this pre-approved list. And then based on multiple factors, including past performance, there is a determination that is made by staff in the Planning and Construction Department.
Thank you. That answered my question.
Thank you. Other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve item N3.
I'll make a motion.
N4.
N4, sorry. N4, you're gonna motion that, Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion from Mr. Pike. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Solis. Would you call for the vote, please?
Solis?
Yes.
Segura?
I'll need abstain.
Pike?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Motion passes four, yes, one abstention.
Item NF3, Mr. Tarantino?
Yes. I have a couple of things. It's been called to my attention by a number of parents about sportsmanship. And I'm gonna read you some football scores. Fifty-six to seven, fifty-two to zero, fifty-eight to zero, fifty-two to thirty, fifty-nine to fourteen, sixty-seven to six, fifty-five to zero, fifty-one to nineteen, sixty-one to three.
Football?
Football, yes. And some of those are within our district, and some of them are throughout the county. And under the board commentation, I was gonna give kudos to Mr. Heinz for bringing back coaches who have served the district and have since retired and are coming back as mentors for the new coaches. But I have a concern about what kind of training, sportsmanship training is being given to our coaches, and if any. And is this something that now as a restorative district, we're okay with? You know, we talked about the harm that's being done to individuals. Well, I can't imagine what it would be like playing with a score of sixty-seven to six. And what kind of mitigation are we doing? I don't know. I just have a concern. And perhaps in a Friday update, we can get a comment from, you know, our coordinator of athletics, as well as, I'd like to know what CIF's responsibility is in this. You know, we have, I mean, again, some of these scores were throughout the county. And what is CIF's responsibility in terms of, you know, sportsmanship training? And after a score of fifty-six to seven, which was the score Eastlake beat Hilltop High by, is anything done to talk to the coach and say, what happened? Why is it fifty-six? Or do we just give them data, boys? Because that's what you do in athletics. That's, and then the other, the other comment that I'd like to address is, I read that Assemblywoman Lorena Gonzalez Fletcher, her bill, which prohibits school districts from holding up diplomas because of fines on books or lost equipment. How are we getting that out to our schools so like that, we don't violate the law, which was, which will probably be signed into effect on January 1st? That's all, Madam President.
I just wanted to say, you know, I used to say that too. Well, I, my son, my oldest son played water polo, and their coach would always stop the, he would pull out the A-team and put in the second string kids when they reached twenty points difference. But I know that there are coaches that pay attention to that, and they do try to teach just because of that, because you don't want to discourage the kids that are trying to, you know, to, and then I mentioned it to my youngest son, as it was a football, oh, no, it was a basketball game. And I know that this school had a, had a really, their sports was not the basketball or the football team, but they had a great soccer team. And my son was playing their team. But don't worry, Mom, they beat us up on soccer, so it all evens out. But I think that is, it can be a concern, because that's, it's always gonna play out that way. But, no, I think it's something to be, so thank you for, right. Now, we'll have board comments, because it's almost to close our meeting. Solis?
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I wanted to congratulate all the teachers of the year. Wonderful job for being nominated. Also, all the National Merit Scholars that are my finalists. Also, I want to thank Mr. Marinovich for having breakfast with me a couple of weeks ago. We had a good conversation. So, thank him. Not here today, but hopefully you'll hear it. Thank you.
Mr. Segura?
Sure. First, I have wrote it down as number one, is I want to wish my wife a happy anniversary, which is today.
Aww.
And I'm too old for late meals, but we did have a good weekend, this previous weekend. And I love you. And then, there was a, under, I'm not even gonna try to say Anna's last name, Angeline, Angeline, and there we go, Banteline, and her board comments a couple, few weeks ago. And then there was follow-up by comments from the public around dress codes and stuff. So, that made me think about, and I've been able to since then, I'm inher-- So that made me think about, and I've been able to since then, I mean, hearing your, your comments and then hearing, um, Ms. Cheers' comments, but honestly, um, um, and reading articles about the impacts, um, about negative, um, impacts of school dress codes, you know, um, on female students. And I would just like to request a update on any work that we have done at any, you know, as, as a district, um, around just, around dress codes and not, that would, um, not result in young ladies being body shamed. I have a daughter who's sophomore, you know, but feel real close, uh, real, you know, it's real important, not only for my daughter, but for all the, yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pike?
Um, I went, uh, last Saturday to the robotics program, of course, and, uh, it was the middle school league they just started and it's very impressive to see all the hard work that goes into that. And, uh, he brought me outside and he showed me the new trailer. They had it painted with the logos of all the schools and, uh, they're just very proud of, of their league and, and their kids. And, you know, you talk about the sports and stuff, those kids, when another team is not doing well, they go over and help them. And I think, you know, that's really kind of the essence of why they do it and how important it is. And it's just really interesting to see them interact with each other, parents, and it's, it was just a really good program. They were all asking me about Mr. Tarantino, cause he's very supportive of it too. But, uh, they, they just, they really look like they have fun and so I just want to let you know that they're progressing very well, very quickly.
Thank you. Tarantino.
Uh, yes, I'd like to congratulate all of the teachers, and I didn't take the time to count how many of them there were, who have attained permanent status with the beginning of this school year. And I look forward to the reception in their honor, which will be held, uh, I believe it's, um, next month, which is only a few days away. Um, the other thing I'd like to, uh, to recognize, I'd like to recognize Carl Cru, Carl Cruz, who, um, is, um, a senior at, um, Sweetwater High School, who was selected the first ever transgender homecoming queen, uh, at Sweetwater High School. Um, having worked at Sweetwater High School, I can tell you that it's always been a school that's been very inclusive and accepting of all students and, um, I, I congratulate Carl and I also congratulate and commend the student body for, um, selecting, um, him as a, or her, as a, um, as the homecoming queen. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I had, I've, I echo the remarks of my fellow board members, um, congratulating those people, one of the accolades of their careers, such as our teachers there. Um, it was really, it, it really was a beautiful performance by our students. I was so proud of them. They opened up with that exciting performance. They owned it. And so did the young man and woman that later danced and had their, um, solos at the, later in the program. It was really, it's really touching to listen to the teachers' testimonies and the testimonies of the, the principal and the students whose lives they impact. There's great things going on in public schools in America. I'll tell you what, and especially in our own district, we have stellar teachers and I just want to thank them and recognize them for the great work they're doing every day. And, um, some of the, I think, I don't know, the five teachers that were the final, uh, final from our district that represented were, they are doing great things and they really are embracing our whole, um, vision of restorative practice, right, putting it into practice, restoring lives, restoring students, giving them a, a whole different experience, giving them ways to embrace learning where, in where it's meaningful to them. And it, it was really, uh, nice to see that they were honored and recognized. Um, I also wanted to thank our, or I want to give a shout out to our own board member, Mr. Segura, who was, who was recognized by his own contemporaries as being their top leader of, of their, top labor leader of the year, uh, for a group of contemporaries. And I, I think that recognition was well-earned. He is, he's a genuine, genuine, uh, hardworking. He wants to take people with him when he goes to the good, good places. He wants to take, wants to see good things happen to you and works hard, make sure that happens in the, where he is and in, in families that across our district, and I really appreciate. I also went to, um, the Southwestern College, hosted the, um, uh, college board of governors dinner last week, which I attended and I, it was a nice, they had their, their chancellor and the chair of their governor, board of governors for all the community college districts across the state. And I sat at a table with the young man, where they had student senators at every table. I really had a great conversation with this young man who was representing, um, the, the business and technology area of their district, student senator for that area, but he graduated from Benita High in two thousand and sixteen. And he had great vision and I told, I shared this story, I shared, uh, you know, how my own son is going to that school and studying and things. And then we talked about, you know, I talked about where my, when my kids graduated and, um, I shared with him about, that my daughter had graduated in two thousand, but she wasn't, not in a college or hasn't, didn't go to college because, um, because of the choice she made to end her own life at the age of twenty-one. And we talked about what that meant and he really shared with me how that, they were working at the Southwestern College, helped students understand, but their challenges, there's challenges across the district. I think he had experienced things in his own school and in his comm, how that impacts the lives of students they're under and the different things. But this being the month, I, prevention and suicidal awareness, mental health, so important that we continue to take every opportunity to share those experiences when we've had them because it will help somebody else, help normalize the conversation to where we can bring, uh, people the help that they, that we can recognize the, um, educate people, they recognize the signs when somebody's struggling and, um, that we can save lives. So I just wanted to share that because that was a great conversation that that young man, along with me, and I, so I did that and then, of course, um, this week I'll be going to the South County, um, Economic Development Council's reception for, it's gonna be held at Ivy Bike Way. Um, so I will, um, put on that after, at our next meeting and I hope everyone has a wonderful night. Thank you.